Hello, welcome everybody to the Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting of December sixteenth. This time is five thirty, five thirty. Call to order. Joe Rusk. Is here and and Gengaiaski, Councilor Genski. Okay, so everybody is here. Right, let me just make some comments. There is no public comment in the Personnel Appointments Meetings. Public comment is not on our agenda and Personal Appointments is a subcommittee of the Council of the Whole, which does not have public comment. The practice of the current Personnel Appointments Committee to not interview those who are being reappointed or those who are in consideration for appointment unless we feel necessary. We will only be interviewing new applicants to the ABC Boards and Commissions. This along with other changes were instituted to streamline the process and to be able to move applicants forward in a more expeditious manner. We've updated the reappointment form to work for both reappointments and alternatives, moving to regular seats. People who move from alternative to regular will move forward in the same manner as reappointments. Candidates do not need to reapply or go through the interview process. Each Commission Chair will fill out the form and send it. Yeah, okay. At this here. Next on the, do we have any calendar and communications? Counselor Rusk?
Thank you. I think we've, we've all received a lot of emails regarding our last meeting. Based on what transpired in the council meeting, we cannot reconsider Mr. Pritchard, which I think is something that has been asked of many of us. But based on what happened in the council meeting that he did not receive six votes to be added to the agenda until he received six votes that can't be something that we discuss here. So I wanted to make that clear to anybody who was watching, who has asked us to reconsider his name. At this point, it is at the council level before it could ever come back to us. So that's my only communication.
All right, Councilor Genski?
I received the same emails as probably both of you about that, and I appreciate Counselor Rusk for saying that so eloquently. So. That is it for me. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Next is approval of the minutes. This is of the minutes of the November nineteenth, twenty twenty four meeting. Counselor Rusk, can you read?
Make a motion to approve the Town Council Personnel and Appointments, Appointments Committee Meeting Minutes of November nineteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Second, all right. Do we have any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of the November twenty, the November twenty fourth minutes say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously. Three zero zero. Okay. Let's move on to our personnel tonight. So the first committee that we are working on is the Historic District Commission. Counselor Rusk, you want to make a motion for the three candidates for tonight?
Sir, Mr. Chair, if it pleases you, I will make a motion for all three of them as member, as alternate members, and then we can, if we decide that one of them should be a full-time member, we can go back and change that one. Is that okay with you?
Sounds fine. That sounds perfect.
Then I make a motion to recommend a resolution appointing Timothy Keeler to the Historic District, Historic District Commission as an alternate member.
Second.
Do you want me to go through all three of them?
Yeah, go through all three. We can do it just like, like we just did this. So do it and then, then I will wait for a second and then move the next one.
Okay.
What's that? No, we're going to do each one individually and then so I'm gonna read each one individually, correct? Didn't talk to Genski.
Okay, so second, then I keep my second then.
Sorry, okay. I make a motion to recommend a resolution appointing Mark Ernst to the Historic District Commission as an alternate member.
Second.
And then I make a motion to recommend a resolution appointing Jeffrey Moriarty to the Historic District Commission as an alternate member.
Second.
All right, perfect. All right. So why don't we, thank you, thank you both for that. Why don't we, Sean, if we have Tim Kohler in the attendees, we can move him over and we'll just do, we'll do each potential person, one after the other, and then we'll discuss and then we'll make a amended motion to how we're gonna put which person in which slot, so.
Hey, I don't have, I don't see Tim Kohler there.
Okay.
He's here unless I, he's called a different name. If he is, you can just let me know in the chat. I, I don't know if you can talk. I do believe I see Mark, Mark's iPad. I'm gonna assume that is him. And I believe in Jeffrey and Walter.
Moriarty.
It just says Jeffrey and Walter. Okay, they changed their screen names on here. I can, you know, that, that'd be fine. But right now, those are, I think Jeffrey is here. I think Mark is here as well, but I do not see.
So why don't we, let's go to Mark and if Timothy shows up, then we'll bring him in. Hi, Mark, welcome. You are muted.
I'm muted.
There you go.
Hello. Dealing with technology here.
That's okay. That's fine. We have, we have a second meeting after this meeting, so that's why we're doing this on Zoom. Otherwise, we would do this
Got it.
Council chamber, so we're kind of stacked up with meetings. I will open the floor to questions for Mark. Counselor Rusk, if you want to go first.
I'll go first. Mark, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for applying to Historic District Commission. Can you just tell me something about your background? We read your, your application, but I'd love it on the record, please.
Sure, I'm an architect. I ran a fifty-person firm in Milwaukee, Wisconsin for many years. We moved here three years ago in where I'm Mystic, where Mystic and on the corner of High Street and New London, and my wife is also an architect. We went through your meetings two or three times to get approval on things we were doing at our house. I am, so I was president of a fifty-person architectural firm for many years. I'm still the president of Wisconsin Trust for Historic Preservation in, in Wisconsin. I went back there about two months ago for a conference at Tellys and Frank Lloyd Rice Hangout in middle of Wisconsin. And gave a little talk about where things were going. I'm still the head of Wisconsin Trust, but transitioning out. So it's been remarkable journey of me doing projects in Wisconsin and around the country. I, as an architect, I've done a lot of adaptive reuse projects. I like to say I've done two convents, one friary, free schools, converting different things. So I've been around the block with various conversions of projects over the years. And been a real advocate for historic preservation in Wisconsin. We, we managed to through lobbying, got the, Wisconsin used to be five percent historic tax credits, and now it's up to twenty percent, which really created a lot of money to do adaptive reuse projects around the state. And when I moved here a few years ago, for a lot of reasons, I'm in East Coast, I went to high school in Boston. So here I am, and I'm very interested in promoting things here and getting engaged in what's going on in my local community.
Thank you for that. And just one follow-up question. What do you hope to bring to the Historic District Commission?
Well, I think I bring, specifically, I think I bring knowledge about the process. We went through, on our own house, went through the process of getting historic tax credits. I have a point of view as an architect. You know, what, what wants to save and, and choices that are made during the process. So I think that is why I'm interested. I mean, really interested, my real interest is getting more engaged in the community. We're busy remodeling itself for three years and we're almost done, ready to start doing some other things.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Counselor Genski, do you have questions, remarks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Ernst, for putting in your application. I appreciate that you have a knowledge of the process. As you've gone through it, could you explain, could you go into further detail about your experience for the commission? Did you find it difficult? What changes you may like to make to the process? And what things that, you know, may be too strict and what things may be too lenient, in your opinion?
That's a very interesting question. That's, that's a lot to comment. I, I, we actually thought the process was, was fine. I think that what both my wife and I bring to the table is a lot of knowledge about buildings in general and what matters. And I think we have done, we've done a job in our house where actually, it's interesting, I'm, I'm very interested in, I'm not answering your question. I'm very interested in historical buildings. But also, we're both kind of modernists in some respects. So what we love about our house is that it's, it's kind of very simple and our, our modern furniture collection works well with things. So I think there's we, we, we thought the process was fine that we went through. We went, I think, four meetings and my wife was really more out in front than I was in that process, but I think that I really appreciate the fact that we have an historical district and there's both incentives and constraints along the process. And I've been, I've done so many adaptive use projects where I've gone through the process with the federal government, and I think I know the process. And I think I bring that to the table. I'm not sure if that still answered your question, but I've been, we've been, I've done so many adaptive reuse projects and head of Wisconsin Trust for many years, so I I appreciate the dynamics of the process. Sometimes it's painful, but in general, I think it's a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Ernst, for that. And I, I noticed you've done a lot of work in Wisconsin. I, could you tell me, just because I'm curious from my own fact, could you tell me about a project that you're like super proud of during that time? As the chair?
Very interesting. I'm trying to think of pick one. Well, I did a, I did a project in Racine, Wisconsin, which was adaptive reuse of a gold medal furniture. We all sat probably in gold medal chairs. At one point, we turned that into a housing project. And you're all, you're always making choices about what you can and can't do. Windows are always important. I was and then I did, I turned a Episcopal church in Milwaukee into a wedding center. And one of the problems with, happened that churches in Wisconsin and urban areas is the congregation is left. So we turned wonderfully, into a wonderful Episcopal church. So into a wedding center. So it's, it's, it's those, and then you navigate during that process, you navigate all the different choices you have to make. Dealing with Episcopal folks, we had to decide what was sacred and what wasn't and what they wanted to keep and not keep. And so I, I've been through probably thirty projects probably that have been adaptive reuse projects, many of which enjoyed historic tax credits and WITA, WITA, which is the housing stuff. We turned a lot of projects into housing. So I'm not sure, again, if that answers the question, but I might, I'm really proud of many of my projects and the hard to choose one.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ernst, for your answering our questions today. And Chairman Jones, I yield back.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mark, for your, your answers and letting us have a conversation with you tonight. I just basically have one, I noticed in your application, you weren't down here, you know, being part of, and you mentioned that already about the being historic preservation. Can you just talk a little bit about your, your love of historic preservation and why you have focused so much attention on that?
Well, in Wisconsin, there are many historical buildings to, that need attention and seeing them transform themselves into something else sometimes is both interesting, painful, sometimes process, but I just believe that historic buildings need to be preserved and also sometimes they need to change, be it turned into something else. Factories, schools, convents, friaries, one friary. And I, I think the buildings need to have a new life, so that's, that's why I'm fascinated with them. I worked with a guy. My, I started in Milwaukee with, working with a guy named Tom Jeffress, who has a historical foundation in, in Wisconsin. It's now larger than Wisconsin. But he was a Parker Penn era and a, and a there and very fascinated with historical buildings and has his own trust that he gives money out on projects. So that's where I really started. This was twenty-five years ago. I'm, I'm I think I was, became the head of the trust probably twenty years ago and still am. They're bottom, we're in transition to newer leadership. I, what I did with the trust was bring it into you know, Wisconsin, Milwaukee, because they had a, a group of kids that were students that were doing amazing scanning of projects and scanning buildings. So I went out to Wisconsin about a, about a month or two ago. Gave a little talk to them and was blown away by the the scanning that they're doing and documentation of historical buildings. So I'm not sure, I'm still getting back to your question, but I've been
No, I just
I've been doing, I've been doing it for a long time. I joined the trust in, Wisconsin Trust in nineteen ninety-four. And then became president probably for at least twenty years and they, I'm still am. They brought me back just really make the transition to the new leadership that's happening. Some of these are happening there. And the, the Wisconsin, the the tax credit things is under, is under threat right now, which is why they really wanted me to stay with it because I fought for it for a long time. And so so that's, that's why I'm passionate about it. I'm interested in old buildings. I think my parents taught me that way back when, so.
Right, terrific, great. Thank you, Mark, very much. I think if nobody has any additional questions, we'll move to our next candidate. If you can, you can just hang if you want till, till we're done with the end, and then I'll give you the instructions of what will happen after that. Mr. Greeley, can you bring Jeffrey Moriarty? Welcome, Jeffrey. Thank you for attending the meeting tonight.
Hi there. Good evening.
Very good. I will open the floor to questions. I'll start with Counselor Genski this time, or Counselor, whoever.
Counselor Genski, you, yep.
Yep, I'm ready to go.
All right.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Moriarty, it is a pleasure to meet you this evening. I thank you for putting in, in application. I have, the first basic kind of questions is, do you live in this Historic District Commission? And if so, have you had any experiences going through the board? Through the commission? And if so, if you would elaborate on that experience a little bit?
Yes, yep, I, I live in the Historic District. I purchased my house on West Mystic Ave just over six years ago. I've had to go to the Historic District four separate times over those six years. First as a, a new homeowner, just trying to do some, some minor changes and updates exterior of my house. And then more recently, this past spring, doing a major renovation to the exterior of my house. So I've gone through both. I've taken advantage of the pre-application process. We're going, just getting some you know, informal feedback and then the formal application process and the public hearing.
Okay, and I was looking at your resume. I see you're a chemical engineer?
That's right, yeah.
And have you had any like art, art, architectural background? In, I, I'm assuming as an engineer, you do a little bit of building and stuff, but I want to know if you have like a little bit of an architectural background?
I, I do not. So I've taken classes at the New York School of Interior Design. But I don't have a degree in art, or history, architecture, or interior design. I did work when I was younger as a carpenter over, over summer, so I consider myself kind of an experienced DIYer, but I'm I'm a engineer by training and I'm a scientist at Pfizer for my career. So I would bring a more of the perspective of a engaged, you know, homeowner who cares about their property if I was on the commission.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. It was a pleasure meeting you, Mr. Moriarty and Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Rusk.
I actually had a lot of the same questions that Counselor Genski already had you cover, basically like your background, which you covered, and what you would bring to the committee as a, you stated that you bring as a homeowner who has been through the process. So is there anything else you'd like to elaborate on, on those two subjects?
Yeah, I think my, I, I think what was intimidating when I first moved to Mystic was I don't, I didn't know what to expect at the Historic Commission. So it can be, especially for new homeowners that move to town and have to go through this, it can be kind of an intimidating process. So I think I would try to bring an open-mindedness and empathy, you know, to the commission if I was appointed. So, and then I think, you know, and generally too, with, with modern materials, I think it's important to, to recognize and allow homeowners to use you know, slightly more modern materials that may not be kind of preservationist or, you know, historic, but still keeps within, you know, the character of, of the town and of Mystic.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, all right, thank you. My question is just your feelings about historic preservation. If you can just sort of elaborate on the character and what you sort of think about the
Yeah, I, I, I think it's critical. So I, I mean, I, I love Mystic. I, I, you know, I've lived in this area for twenty years. I was in Stoneham Borough before I moved to the Historic District. I, I looked, you know, specifically over nine months back in twenty eighteen for the house I ended up eventually buying, just because I love, I love the town so much. I go for walks every day, weather permitting. So I, I enjoy the area. I enjoy the, the architecture. I think individually, our homes are important assets. And then collectively, together, all of our homes create this amazing community and this amazing asset for, you know, our county, our, our state, our, our region, and it's, you know, it's, it's now world famous. So I think it's important to maintain, you know, the character and preserve, especially the historic homes and, and businesses and buildings downtown, but allow you know, the flexibility for homeowners, maybe out, maybe a little bit further away from downtown to, to update their house while ensuring they're gonna have kind of that high-quality material that will last a long time.
All right, fantastic. Thank you. And thank you for coming tonight. You can just, you can just hang. For a minute, we have one more person. I don't know whether he's available or not. Then we'll discuss and then we'll, we'll vote what, how things go. So, all right, Jeffrey, thank you very, very much. Sean did, has Timothy shown up at all?
I do not see him unless he's here under another name. I do not see him.
So I think what I'll do, he put in his application, I'm just going to read basically, his first sentences were sort of sum his views on things, just so we the other two candidates spoke well on their position. So we just have all three covered. This is for Timothy Kohler. What do you know about the board? HTC is tasked with preserving our town's architectural heritage by reviewing changes to structures in designated historic areas from my experience presenting before the commission vote as a residential and commercial. The second question was, what educational background and work experiences do you have? He mentioned my experiences renovating properties in historic districts such as those in Washington DC, London, Denver, have equipped me with a well-rounded perspective as owner of the eighteen fifty-three Greek Revival Home in Mystic and a business on Water Street. I understand the delicate balance between maintaining architectural integrity and meeting modern needs. And the third question was listing local organizations. He said, I'm involved with several local groups in Mystic, including Chamber Commerce, where I connect with fellow business owners to promote economic growth, an active member of the Seaport Museum, and support our efforts to preserve maritime and colonial heritage. So that, so does the third candidate that we have. I guess we'll open the floor to, so we have two alternate positions and one full-time position. Does anybody want to weigh in on where they feel different candidates might fit?
I would like to start by just saying thank you to, I'm sorry, I didn't ask for the floor, ma'am.
No, that's okay.
I would just like to say thank you to all three candidates for coming forward and applying. I think all three will make excellent candidates on here. But I do feel that Mr. Ernst is kind of like ready to step in immediately and, and take that that full member position. Well, unfortunately, we didn't get to meet Mr. Keeler and Mr. Moriarty are both would be great as alternate members to move up maybe at a later date and step in when necessary. That would be my opinion.
All right, thank you. Counselor Genski, any thoughts on which candidate for which position?
I agree with Counselor Rusk's opinion. And just said it eloquently, so I'm gonna leave it at that.
All right, and I'm gonna also echo that too. I like the, the historic preservation background. Somebody who, it's a different state, I'm sure we'll come up to speed quickly on the Connecticut rules and Mystic rules that we have or rotten rules that we have. But I like that that, he has such a heavy emphasis on historic, and I, I agree also with the other consuls, that the other two candidates will be good additions and, and can learn and be ready to move up when and if that happens, so. All right. Counselor Russ? Can you make an amended motion?
Yes, I would like to amend my motion to recommend a resolution appointing Mark Ernst to the Historic District Commission as a full member. So moved.
Second, second.
All those in favor of Mark Ernst for the full-time position on the Historic District Commission?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, that passes unanimously. Three oh two oh, all right. Next candidate?
We have two. Go ahead, Counselor Genski.
Point of parliamentary inquiry. Yes, yes. Um, I believe we just vote on, since there's two alternate vacancies, I believe we can just vote on Mr. Kohler and Mr. Moriarty in one motion, if I'm correct.
Point of parliamentary inquiry, do we need to vote for Mr. Ernst one more time since it was an amended motion?
Or do we do them all at the same time?
I, I believe you, yeah, actually. In my opinion, do I have a, you have a joke? Yeah.
Yes, you are, I think.
I believe Counselor Rusk is right in that we made the amended motion with Mr. Ernst as a full member. Now we all voted together, but no, we made them all individual motions.
Yeah, I, that's gonna say, we made them all individually. We should do the individual, okay, all right.
So yeah, because we made individually oceans with three seconds, so it should be separate votes for all of them.
Okay, so then for the motion on the floor for Mark Ernst? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Aye, all right, so the. Major motion becomes, all right, next candidate. Timothy Kohler.
Aye.
Aye.
And the final candidate, this is for the alternate vacancies, Jeffrey Moriarty.
Aye.
All right. All right, all of those pass unanimously. So Timothy Kohler for the alternate vacancy, Mark Ernst for the full-time vacancy. And Jeffrey Moriarty for the alternate vacancies. All right, congratulations. To all candidates. So what happens next is the, the personnel appointments committee is just a recommendation committee. So now that will be passed to the town council for final votes. Also, somewhere in here, we don't have a date yet, but you will be asked to do a Roberts Rules. And a FOI foyer training. Those are new town requirements. And we will also have now harassment training, which is a state requirement. So those are forthcoming. The town is trying to figure out what's the best way to do that. It'll be some kind of an online, hopefully an online training, so. Watch for that and you'll, uh, the town clerk, I'm sure will reach out to you. And congratulations and thank you, all right. Okay, let's go to the next. All right. Library Board, Council Russ, can you motion?
Make a motion to recommend a resolution appointing Susan Troy to the library board as a full member. So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. All right, let's open, uh, do we have Susan Troy here? Mr. Greeley?
I believe we do. I just uploaded her.
Welcome, Susan. And you're muted at the moment.
Hi, welcome. Nice to meet you all.
Yes, thank you very much.
Sorry, I wasn't able to put in the chat. The chat was disabled, so I couldn't say it's me before I was trying, but anyway. But here I am, and yes, I'm excited to apply for the, the library board opening.
Okay, fantastic. Let me open the floor to questions. Council Guyaski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Ms. Troy. It is a pleasure to meet you. I just kind of want to have an idea, what is your current relationship with the Groton Public Library?
So currently I am, uh, you know, I, a cardholder and I, I use library services often. And I am a member of the Circle of Friends. Which is a volunteer component of the library. I had been secretary and, and. Officer of that, but I stepped down this year at the end of the year for my secretary role there. In hopes that I might be able to step into a board position when one opened up.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Troy. Um, that, I, I believe that, um, members of our library board should be active users of our library. And have some type of involvement of it. And I appreciate that you were a member of the friends, so, um, as all, that was the only question I had. Um, and Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
All right, thank you. Council Russ, do we have any questions?
Um, no real questions, just to thank you for stepping up. I read your bio and I think you're very qualified by. Um, and I thank you for all you, all that you do to volunteer for the town of Groton.
Thank you, it's my pleasure.
Thank you, and just looking here, I think. Can you just talk a little bit, um, you, you mentioned in your, in your resume. That one of the primary responsibilities of the board is to oversee policies and serving as a link to the community. Can you just talk a little bit about the overseeing policies and then how you see the library linking to the, to the community?
Oh, sure, yeah. So I think, well, I think the, um, the board is used to revise policies and I, and they actually just. Finished that. I, I have been going to the meetings just as a community member because I wanted to get a feel for the committee before I, you know, before I. Volunteer to be part of it. Um, and then. So, I'm sorry, what was the second part? So that was the.
Oh, serving as a link to the community, how, just talk a little bit.
Sure, so I, I mean, I, well, um, I don't know if they use it too often, but I, I was on a municipal board. When I lived in Vermont, a municipal library board. And so they might have asked us occasionally. For opinions if they were looking for, you know, feedback on community, you know, what community needs were or something. So we could act as a resource to the library in that way. I don't know if the library would need us to, you know, act as a resource, you know, to. Try to, you know, get the feel of what the community might want if they wanted to add services or change them. I'm just, you know, I, I think we do a great job. We're blessed with the library we have and. I have no like agenda to change things. I just want to help support it and continue.
Terrific, all right, fantastic. Thank you very much. I think that concludes my questions and thank you, as, as Council Russ said, thank you for volunteering. I think we can go to. Motion, all those in.
No, point of order.
Yes.
I don't believe there was a motion ever made.
I made a motion.
On this, yeah.
I made the motion, you seconded it.
I did? I am so sorry, okay. I just wanted to make sure we did that because I didn't remember seconding it.
Yeah, no, I, I, we did.
Okay, that's why, okay, I'm glad. All right, that's my bad.
Okay, no problem. Just put this here.
Been a long day at work, huh?
Yeah, yes, yes, it has been a long day at work.
All right, all those in favor of Susan Troy for a full member of the vacancy on the library board?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Susan. And so next, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
So next will be, um, ours is a recommendation and that will move to the town council. And they will do a final vote at the next council meeting. Uh, we will also, um, we have new requirements in town. For all board members, for Roberts Rules and Foya, so that you will get a notice on that. And then harassment training, which is the new state requirement, so.
Great, thanks. So that, sign off now or?
You can sign off now, yes, everything's all set.
All right, thanks so much. Have a nice evening.
You too, thank you. Okay. Uh, all right, the last interview we have tonight is for the rent commission. And Mr. Greeley will bring this person in.
Is it, uh, Socorro Ramos?
Yes, it is.
Yes, uh, I do not see them online if, uh, they're under another name, if they could raise their hand. That would be a good indication. But otherwise, I do not see them.
All right. Okay, so we'll just. All right, so then what I'm going to. So that person's not here. This is for, this is Socorro Ramos, is for the Fair Rent Commission. Uh, let me just, I'll just highlight a little bit what's on their application. Uh, what do you know about the board? This is, I understand this board helps to make decisions regarding fair housing. Education and background, associate degree and works at Pfizer is also a renter. And as he said, is painfully aware of the issues that renters and landlords face. And then. Uh, part of the community, please list all local community organizations. He was a coach for Special Olympics Mystic, led your team, the Groton City PAC Committee and many other community organizations. So, um, I'll open the floor to any comments on Mr. Ramos.
I would like to make a motion. To recommend a resolution appointing Socorro Ramos to the Permanent School Building Committee as a full-time member.
Fair Rent Commission.
Whoa, let me redo that one. My apologies. I don't think Soky would like that. Uh, make a motion to recommend a resolution appointing Socorro Ramos to the permanent, to the. Let me try this one again. I make a motion to recommend a resolution appointing. Socorro Ramos to the Fair Rent Commission as a full member. So.
Second.
And I was missed in not doing that first before we went through his explanation, but, okay. Any comments or questions that we can answer, but. Council Guyaski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I get, um, I know it says he's a renter. And I, and I know, so does the motion have to say full member in the tenant position? Because the third part of the, I used to be, full disclosure, I was a member of the Fair Rent Commission. And I think it has to be distinct, and I know it's very hard to find tenant members, so I just want to know.
It does, yes, it says, um, one full, full member tenant. Yes.
So do we have to make that distinction in the motion, I guess, is my question?
I guess, ye- yes, I, I, well, yes, because there's two vacancies. For full members is a vacancy without anything and there's a vacancy for a tenant.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make an amendment to, um, a full member as a tenant.
I'll second that.
Okay.
And then. And then.
Okay, that's fine. Anything else?
Yeah. Um, ca- can I be recognized?
Yes, you can, you are recognized.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to be recognized, um, before I did that. Um, yeah, the reason I did that is I just, I know it's really hard to find tenants, being a former member. Um, and there was, I know there had been issues in the past where there was somebody that was appointed as a full member. But they really were a landlord and then there was some, they had to do some shuffling around. Um, so that's why I was just super conscious of that. And tenants are always just kind of hard to find because they're renting and possibly moving, so. Um, it's, it's, I think vitally important and, um, this is, you know, every, currently as the commission sits. Every single member would have to show up to the meeting for there to be a quorum. Um, so adding another member, um, I think is vitally important.
Okay. Council Russ?
Um, I'm sad that Soky couldn't come tonight, but I do want to say that I've known her for quite some time, um, through the PAC Commission. And she was also a volunteer with me. Um, so I'm excited to see her in this position. Thank you.
All right. So all those who are in favor of, um, so, is that pronounced right, Soky or so?
It goes by Soky, it's Socorro.
Socorro, uh, Ramos for one full member tenant of the Fair Rent Commission.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, all right, pass unanimously. Three zero zero, okay, cool, thank you very much.
Parliamentary inquiry? If we make an amended motion, do we have?
I'm holding on a second here. All right. For the main motion on the floor, for Socorro Ramos for one full member tenant of the Fair Rent Commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Pass unanimously. Okay, all right, now we go to reappointments and we have one, two, we have three reappointments. For the, um, Permanent School Building Committee. Uh, Council Russ, would you like to read those?
Mr. Chair, would you like me to do them as one or as three resolutions?
Let's do them as three for each individual one.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution reappointing Robert Austin LaFrance to the Permanent School Building Committee as a full member, so moved.
Second.
Uh, next.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution reappointing Kevin Trejo to the Permanent School Building Committee as a full-time member.
Second.
And I make a resolution to recommend, I'm sorry, make a motion to recommend a resolution. Reappointing Christina Post to the Permanent School Building Committee as a full member, so moved.
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments on these? Uh, this is a reappointment candidates. Council Guyaski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have crossed paths with all of these individuals on their time. Um, on the Permanent School Building Committee and their involvement in other things across the community. Um, and they have all carried themselves with outstanding conduct, professionalism. And they really do have, um, our schools in their, in their best interest. So, um, I, I am glad that they do, um, decided to reapply and I, I look favor in supporting all of them.
All right, thank you. Council Russ? All right, um, so let's move, I will do each one of these individually. We have a motion to consider, um, Austin LaFrance, RJ Austin LaFrance for Permanent School Building Committee. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes three zero zero, passes unanimously. We have a motion on the floor for Kevin Trejo for a permanent school building committee.
Aye. Sorry. Jumping the gun there.
Jumping the gun, all right, all the favorite, we are?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. And for our last candidate, Kristi Post for a full-time. There's a full-time position on the Permanent School Building Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, all right. So for all of those candidates, the same instructions that I had for the other applicants is that. Personnel appointments is a recommending committee. It will, your, our recommendations will move forward to the council for a final approval. And somewhere in here, we will have Roberts Rules Training and FOI Training, which are now new town requirements. And harassment training, which is a state requirement. Um, those will be coming forth with. Um, as soon as the town figures out exactly how to do that, so. Do I have a motion? Any other business on the floor?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Personnel Appointments Committee has adjourned at six fifteen.
This is John. I'll go ahead and get the next meeting started.
Okay.
Was it right on the same zone?
Um, I think you have to log back in.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have, because I have to end this, yeah.